Do we have a board?
We do have a board.
Okay. First, our business, the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not seeing any business there. Of guests. I don't see any publics, nor do I think we can have public comment. A group will have minutes of June 4th.
Move the wave of the reading of the minutes and approve the metric.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, move the second, and any further discussion?
I approve the motion.
Oh, the minutes.
Calvin voted to approve the minutes.
I think so, wave the minutes.
Wave the reading.
Wave the reading. Sorry, I didn't read the script. See no discussion, you want to call it, really?
Sorry, I was.
You know, she just got here.
I know, I know.
Sorry.
I'll drag that out, I'll drag. So, motion passed.
Motion passed? Alright. You're up, Mr. Brown.
Okay. Usually takes, Donnie, usually have to start it out for me.
You have, sorry.
Thanks, boss. Now I got nothing to do. There we go. Alright, first, good to see everybody. As we are here at the end of summer, which is kind of sad and quick, but anyhow. But a few things that we wrapped up with at the end of the year last year, and then we got some kind of big discussion items that we can go over. But first, in June, we had, we met before Skills USA happened. We did send down a great crew, down to eight students, and the instructors and advisors. We are very pleased to say that Nikki Fabro from Auto Collision and Sterling received a bronze medal, took third place. One of the nicest kids you ever meet, fantastic that she, she, or the recognition that she has. Several other students, Carly Smith, Asia Sanford, both are top 10 in their categories as well. We already talked about Nadia, you remember, we keep winning the state pin design. We've won it multiple years in a row now, so great work by folks in graphics and everything, but obviously Nadia as well. We did have some students that just went down as delegates, which is certainly a great part. They know they learned the process of running the organization and everything else. But one thing that's really nice that we could also say is that Kelsey Eikonen from Business Tech, Gardner, daughter of one of our instructors, was named a state officer. So she is a Massachusetts state officer, she's going to be the secretary for this upcoming year, so very happy about that. And as always, we get the advisors, Alicia Quinn, Christine Sandry, Brad Beltier, Mike Corfand did a fantastic job, so I'm sure Diana, it was a wonderful experience.
Largest ever.
There you go. Alright. We always try to give you an update we do at the end of June, is when we do the graduation for the PN program. Things, you know, great things happening there. They did their graduation and pinning for 45 students. You can see that 16 have already passed the end clicks. And most of them are working within, a lot of them at rehab or senior centers, you know, but within the area across, but then some other different positions that they're working at. So very, very good. Four did continue on to go forward at MWCC, Pittsburgh State, West Carolina Elms. But again, great program, the instructors are doing a fantastic job. Just so everybody knows, we had mentioned back in June that, you know, Andy O'Carraw, who's been our director, been fantastic. Some issues that she has to take care of in terms of, so she has resigned. She's still going to work with the program as an adjunct instructor, but we will have, we put out a posting, we got the most views for a single posting, it was 530 or something, Tammy, or some crazy number.
Yeah, around here.
And we only got one applicant. And unfortunately, the challenge to get a director for this, is they have to have taught for three years. So as you know, a lot of nurses work with preceptors and stuff like that, where they're working on the floor, but they actually have to be physically teaching a class. So trying to find a nurse that has that, it's a bit of a challenge, so. Terry Duchon, who's one of our current instructors, will be the interim, so we'll have them in place, which is really great, because as you can see, a fantastic group of students have already enrolled. They got 112 applicants for our PN program. Forty-eight students have been chosen, that's just fantastic, the numbers that they're getting are tremendous. Five of them are graduates from Monty Tech, so that's always good, too. I should mention that, unfortunately for our colleagues, Bay Pass program, they ended up having to close it for this year, so there's a year, so I think that's one of the reasons also why we may have had additional applicants. But hopefully that will get them squared away, but great job by the PN program as always, we do a great job every year. Alright, AP, another very strong year, record-breaking in many ways. I'm sorry, the chart is really small, but hopefully you can see it, you know, if you can zoom or anything like that, but for this year, we had the most number of students who took exams, 192. The most total exams, which is 291, which basically speaks to students who took multiple AP exams. And even more important, we had the most students who achieved a qualifying score, so 135. Again, that all helps depending on where they apply, if they go on to college, in terms of getting credit for those courses and everything else. So fantastic, you can see all the instructors on the left side there, what a fantastic job they do. And again, a couple of those programs are pretty much brand-new. AP Psych came in just recently, AP Seminar, AP Research. Those are smaller, one-period classes, but still very successful, very proud of what's going on with our AP stuff. So, give you an update on some of the summer renovations, and you know, Mike might need to jump in and correct me on anything that I don't get. One of the biggest projects that we had, top-left corner, mostly for, I mean, was getting old, but also in terms of utilities, the cafeteria, we lowered the ceiling, brought it down, so it's a brand-new ceiling. We've cleared out the windows for now, we still have to add blinds there, and we're going to be adding some new glass as well, correct, Mike?
We did not lower.
Oh, I thought we had lowered.
We did not lower, that would have been another 50,000.
Oh, okay, sorry, but we got a new one.
Tammy would not let me spend that.
Tammy, good job, alright. But yeah, but so we got, still some work that needs to be done, but it looks very sharp. In the middle, unfortunately, that is what currently stands for our auto body spray booth, however, we met with the pool and construction on Monday, we've laid out the timeline, they're still, they'll have the booth up in the next couple of weeks. It won't be fully completed, the connections will be done pretty quickly. We think it'll be the second week, second or third week of September that the booth will be completely done, ready to go. Instructors were part of the conversation, they know the timeline, so they'll vamp a little bit for that first week, week and a half, but we'll have the booth up and going. Yes, sir.
That should only give us two booths, correct?
It'll be a dual booth, so there won't be two separate booths, there'll be one dual booth.
So that'll be a dual booth?
Yes.
And the other little one will be taken down for it?
Gone, yeah.
Okay, so that's going to be, okay.
Correct.
What's the way there?
It was just, a lot of the contractors, they're having trouble, because they're subcontracting most of the work, so getting them in was a challenge, shall we say. But that's why we pulled them in, so okay, but now that you've kind of slowed down, we need to know your exact timeline, and we feel good about the timeline, so we should be good there. All the materials are on-site, everything's ready to go, it's just getting the work crew here. Top-right, CAD, we're in the middle of doing some renovations there, we added cabinet-making, did some work there to get more storage. The other thing they're doing is they're going to be dividing the class installing and withdrawal. Part of that one, it gets us access to some of the utilities a little better, but also oftentimes, when the classes were teaching, one class is trying to take, do an assessment while the other class is right next to them in an open space, so this kind of quieted that down and everything, and served that purpose. So CAD's still working there. Engineering, part of that is, that's all new painting, trying to kind of bring some life to that shop, it was a little bit, I'll go some parts, they made it a little bit rundown. They've got new storage equipment, new tables and everything else, so their shop's going to look brand-new, we're really excited about that. Brian might need to help me with, but you remember, we had the Capital Skills Grant that actually goes back quite a way, a bit of ways. This is where we originally had the food truck on, and they approved it, and then they said we couldn't have the food truck, so then we had to reallocate the funds, but that allowed us to get a couple of new broilers, that helped us get that pizza oven that I showed you back in June, some coolers, a whole bunch of equipment that's, so culinary is really inside, not every piece is going to be brand-new, but they got a ton of new equipment in there, which is fantastic. Boring picture, but bottom-left, just so everybody knows, we had talked to you about the fact that the ATM was going to be coming out, that workers wasn't going to support it anymore. We're still looking to try to see if we can bring somebody in. We had taken a look at a few things, Bill had reached out to a few people that he thought might, and now it sounds like there might be another pathway that might be able to follow, because the bottom line is, when the ATM is up, the ATM is working, that thing is used all the time by students and staff alike, so we really want to try to get something back there. If it comes back, it's not going to go to that spot, though. We'll put it someplace in the lobby, but not there, because the wall's now nice and neat, and continuing it needs all the space they can get. Last year, using Perkins funds, one of the shops that we would love to do more in there to work with in renovation is cosmetology. It's cramped, it's just, it needs more work. The problem is, when we go for grants, not surprising, cosmetology isn't a priority trade, so trying to get grant support for that is very difficult. Perkins allows us the freedom to use those funds, but allowed us at least get brand-new chairs, ergonomic and everything else, so they are getting at least a spruce-up that we're really happy about. And then bottom-right, I sent you out the email on Friday. We arrived at school, and there was water coming up from the ground and everything else. Allison, our director for early childhood, found it as she came in. Thankfully, Mike knew someone immediately who had done some work for us, they came right out, they were fantastic. Several Monty Tech grads, which helped, we really appreciated that. I mentioned to you that we didn't know where the leak was going to fall in terms of being on the pipe itself, the big concern is, if it's under the steps, now we're digging up the steps, and that's going to be a very costly project. The good news is, we don't have to go under the steps, as of now. They replaced the pipe, the piece that was broken, so it's flowing again and everything else. They didn't have to tear up anything else, they backfilled and put everything in on Monday morning and everything else. The issue is this, though, and again, Mike can describe better than I, but the pipes that are installed are surrounded by the concrete there, the pipe itself was not in great shape, and you just have to know that pretty much all the other pipe in there might have been wrong, was installed all at the same time, obviously, so we can make the assumption that the rest of the pipe down there are not exactly in spectacular shape either. Well, we're hoping for the best right now, but it might be something that we need to come up with an address at some point and everything else, but right now, we feel pretty good about where we are.
I know in towns, that, in towns that, when our water and sewer lines throughout towns get old, and that, sometimes they have companies that can do liners, internal liners, is that something that's even possible with some, with the water line?
I don't know, I don't think they'll do a liner in water, they do liners in sewer lines.
Just sewer line?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big sock they pull through.
Right.
It's resin.
Exactly.
Full air in it, blows up.
But we can't do it from like, jack the water line, so before they fracture, okay, it is what it is, right?
I'll add that one of the sections that was pulled up was one of the brick inlays that had an inscription on it, the workers were nice enough to work around that, they pulled it up as a whole piece, so we have that, and we're going to try to find a place where it might be able to hang it someplace else or something like that, so we'll take care of that. One other thing I want to mention that isn't up there, I think we might have mentioned in the spring, working with folks at DMH and David Hinkley, who I know, you know, who was a student from here, great, great young man. We had the ability to get access to EV chargers, basically paid for to be installed here, so we're working with them to, so we'll be installing a couple EV chargers, we'll be able to, and we haven't done the math, we'll get a little bit of funds from it, but nothing significant or anything like that. But people have been asking for it, you know, as you know, more and more EV vehicles out there, so we hope that's going to help something.
And we're going to respond with the upkeep, maintenance, hopefully with the practice, once it's.
Yeah, I don't think there's a whole lot to it, from what I understand. And in terms of upkeep, keep in mind that we have the CEC grant, so one of the things we're supposed to be doing is training our folks how to do the upkeep, so hopefully we can do it ourselves.
I get it, yeah, it's good money, thank you.
Yep.
Any update on the occupancy permit for the MVP?
So, I think as I've told you, the occupancy permit, we're basically still working on, we spoke to Mr. Morielli down at Pittsburgh, he says, "You're fine, keep going." We were, they were waiting, because we needed to finish the lifts, which are now finished, so everything's good. We haven't received the permanent one, but they're not rushed, they're perfectly fine. Yeah, so that back, the back roof just needs to be finished. The door is fine, the door is operating and everything else, they just didn't have time to finish the roof. So, there's two things, they need to finish the roof, and then at the front, you'll see where the landing is when you go up the stairs, it's just an open space, we're going to put some false stone in front of it, just to make it look better. So those are the only two things left. So it's really just, you know, small cover-ups, that's all.
Just one thing, Tom.
Yep.
During the school year.
Yep.
We have at least 2,000 people a day in this building. There really needs to be an ATM.
Oh, yeah, no, we agree, we agree 100%, yeah. Like I said, it's just finding the right person, we thought we had one bank that was going to do it, they've decided they don't want to. I mean, I wish we had, were able to show them, because I have to think workers was making some pretty good money off of fees and everything else on that machine, because so many kids, and again, adults were using it as well. But again, these, a lot of these are still ongoing, so we'll revisit that. In terms of grants, we were holding out for one last grant that we did get, I'll go over that, but overall, you can see, great year for grants. Katie were here, we certainly congratulate her, but all the instructors and everyone else who helped her. So 3.6 million in grants in one year, last year. The most recent one there at the bottom, the CTI, Career Technical Initiative Round 10, I guess I'll just skip right to it. Again, this is for the unemployed and underemployed adult training that we do through continuing ed. The programs that CTI 10 will cover will be CNC operator. A new one that we're really excited about, groundskeeping and small engine repair. That's kind of inched its way up in terms of the priorities, in terms of job placement and everything else. So when we work in mass hire, they were said, "Absolutely, go for it, that's going to be a good program," and we're confident that's going to have a whole lot of applicants. We'll run HVAC again, and we'll run culinary, the cook position as well.
Wait, how about CNC operator?
CNC operator is essentially what we have in drafting, so what it does is, for like cabinet-making, I should say cabinet-making, you program in what it wants to cut, and it really cuts it for you, it does all the, it's computer design, I forget the last C is, kind of thing.
Okay. Curious about, you got there equipment operator, oh, you'd be buying equipment, teach them how to operate heavy equipment?
Well, if you recall, what we did is, through the anonymous donation that we got a few years ago, we purchased simulators. So heavy equipment operator simulator, so. They've arrived, I think?
Tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow. So it's computer, it's basically kind of looks like one of those gamer chairs kind of thing, and they do it right there on the screen and everything else?
It's interesting, because my son, who was graduate from here, he did the, he went to, I forget if he was in the shop, the HVAC room now.
Yep.
And he now is a heavy equipment operator, and he tells me all the time, he's been good a long time, runs jobs like that, and he tells me all the time, they are struggling to find people to operate equipment.
Hundred percent.
It's tough, so, I'm glad to see that, Tim.
So again, great year for grants and everything else. Now looking ahead to grants, so this is a really important piece, that literally, we just got the information on Monday, when Desi held a webinar. Sorry, we kind of had to use snippet pictures, so they're not the clearest pictures. But if you recall, the state promised that they were going to start setting aside money specifically as expansion grants for vocational schools. This is the first group that's coming out. These are grants that will be three-year grants from 2025 to 2028, specifically, I should switch to the list, you'll see that it's specifically geared towards technical education schools, chapter 74 programs and everything. Again, preference will be given to schools that can demonstrate waiting lists, yeah, we certainly can group that. So basically, this is supposed to, whether you're going to add an addition, renovate a classroom to, or a shop to make it bigger, leasing, there's tons of money in there for leasing. They're talking about individual grants of up to $5 million. This is big bucks. And obviously, we are going to apply for this grant. I was at the Mava Retreat today, summer retreat, and the majority of districts are already saying, "Yeah, we're going to apply, and we're going to go for all 5 million." Part of it, though, is that several of the schools already are in the pipeline with the school building authority, some schools just finished their school building authority, so not everyone's going to be available to apply for this grant, because they're already got, you know, money to build their buildings or renovate their buildings. You know, without kind of reading it off all to you and everything else, but you can definitely, you know, zoom it in and everything else, but basically, it just talks about how, you know, it's a CT grant, that basically, it's going to be the Executive Office of Education, MSBA, DESI collaborating with vocational schools to find what is the best process. It can include both planning, you know, the planning and design piece for the project, as well as the construction. Again, it'll talk specifically about doing five-year leases, that will support that, so there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of ways that we can use this, these funds. And keep going, I got to get that, yes, sir?
Tom, in reference to that, there's something coming up new, what about the pre-existing one that we already went through with the MVP, where three vocational programs are supposed to be approved, only have two?
For plumbing, correct.
So plumbing is, what's holding that up?
So plumbing, they, yeah. You said it, not me, but yes. Yeah, so plumbing is, we're not going to get that for this year, obviously, it's gone now. What we've done is, I should let everybody know, is all the sending districts, we already put in this time, are intent to apply, they have that, so we're in the running now that hopefully we get everything, and we open plumbing next year.
So it's a possibility?
Correct. Oh, yeah, 100%. So, so to outfit plumbing, we'll put in for a partnership grant, different grant than this one, get the equipment and everything, and open that up. Bill had asked during the summer, I kind of let him know, Desi just stopped, basically came to a point and just kind of stopped answering our questions, and then, basically, it was, "Tom, leave us alone," kind of thing. But I was disappointed, I didn't get a chance, we, they just did the award ceremony for CTI yesterday, and I wanted to try to grab Bob LaPage, just kind of say, you know, if we're not going to do it, could you at least send us an email that said, you know, this isn't happening, but I didn't, I couldn't catch up with him, so.
I was reading over, and maybe I read too quickly, but I know, like, we can't really add to this building, because it's too costly, but would any of this grant allow a separate building, like we have done with Vet, Science, et cetera?
So, yes, I mean, yeah, it would, so we have to have some long conversations about, so I just want to emphasize real quick for everybody, so these are the priority, and again, it's unfortunately kind of small, and Donnie, I think, you can't zoom in, can you? Make it bigger. I mean, the ones up top are the ones that they're really looking at people to try to get. If you can, Donnie, don't worry about it.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Alright, so can you move back, oh, yeah, I can do it. So, in the top-right, if you see it, it kind of speaks to what Jeff just spoke about, that CDL drivers and diesel technicians are very much needed in industry right now, in a huge way. There aren't a lot of vocational schools that are doing the diesel technician piece. That's one of the things that kind of stood out to us as options, you know, they still have the manufacturing, you know, CNC machinists, we're already doing that, you know, on the healthcare piece, we already have LPM and everything else, we don't necessarily have a biotechnology, maybe we could take a look at that. But we have to have the conversation about, and certainly, it's going to be part of the process, the grant has to be submitted, we have to do an intent to apply, and then it has to be submitted this fall, so we have some time. But, I mean, this doesn't necessarily have to be an MVP-type, I'll be honest, one of the things I was thinking about is, and again, we'd have to have longer discussions about how it's going to affect, but let's say we did decide to do diesel technician off-campus. We have experience now with doing a satellite campus, but we do it for Monty Tech students.
I hope if we do go diesel tech, one of the things I think that I noticed in the industry, basically because my son being involved in it, and I'm the kind of owner of the company, the diesel power, like the tractor shows, the ones, one small piece, a lot of people don't understand, like the big S3, the lowers.
Yeah.
They're big diesel engines that run big hydraulic pumps, and there's that piece, the hydraulic side of it, of repairing the pumps, and all that, that attaches to the engine, that is often equally as.
It's a lot more than just what we think it is.
We have, like, nobody out there that really is good with that kind of stuff anymore. The old people are repairing it.
Sure, yes.
We have the excess land next to the parking lot.
I haven't ruled that out either, that's been in my mind as well.
The diesel mechanic program is like, too big garage, you can probably do it with two kids on a slab, out of a building.
Mike and I, even when we first kind of decided we had that land, one of the problems is, we don't necessarily know, and obviously, the power's there and everything else, but I think it's something that, if we're going to go down this road, we have to at least explore that, I agree with you.
Absolutely.
Yes, I would agree with that, that's something we need to at least consider.
And it's on campus.
Yeah, correct. I mean, I think if we had a program where we were adding, let's say we kept the shop at 15 students or so per grade, so we're adding 60 students, now we have to make sure we have room for the academic classes and everything, to add 60 more students. But it's, it's an opportunity to potentially do something like that, because we all know that we're not going to be able to walk into the other towns and say we're going to build a new school. So this might be a piece, so. So this is, you know, this kind of shows kind of where the timeline is and everything else, you know, the intent to apply is September 15th, that's just a quick form, we'll have that in. You know, you have to, again, you have to have things in by the fall and so forth, and then they would basically be issuing the grants in December, and again, it could be a three-year grant all the way to 2028. So very interesting, very exciting, we just have some work to do to try to figure out, and obviously, as we start deciding what we're going to do, we'll be talking with everybody here, so.
You know, I find kind of ironic, Tom, when I was here in the 80s, we had a diesel mechanics program.
Well, what'd you let it go for?
We had a small engine repair thing going on, and some grounds.
Bill, do you have something?
Would those funds also be available to purchase the building where MVP is possibly?
Good question. I think technically, yes. Technically, yes, yeah.
So we can't get to a program, you could always.
Yeah, no, we have lots of options, correct.
Save ourselves.
Correct. Yeah. Okay, so, so that's one big thing. Next big thing, admissions. I think I've mentioned to some folks, we've been kind of communicating through email, Diane and I, knowing that admissions was coming up, what we were waiting for was a couple of things. One, just this afternoon, we had, again, we had the Mava Retreat, there was a session there that had all the administrators from all the vocational schools sharing their thoughts about the admissions policy, what to do. We also, we provided a template that we might be able to use. We've already taken our current admission policy and done some work to implement the lottery pieces and everything else, so there's an August 20th meeting. What our thought is, is that we're going to have some conversations here, there's obviously going to be some conversations at some committee level, but then we start moving on, you know, September, if we could get first reading in, October 2nd, we have to have it submitted by November 1st. So, yes, sir?
What would happen if we chose not to support the lottery piece of it, and said absolutely vote no, what would happen?
That would be really bad for us.
Would it? Well, just curious, but.
I don't know what would happen, but it is a policy of the state, and it's, it would basically be like saying, "We're not going to give it," well, now we don't have to, but three years ago, saying, "Yeah, we're not going to do MCAS," yeah, that's just not going to go over well, so.
There's nothing to say that we won't give that chapter 75 online.
Yeah, correct, absolutely, so. Yes, no, yes, really, they're, it's moved on, it's happening, we're all going to do it, we've all accepted it. It's moved on, it's happening, we're all gonna do it, we've all accepted it and everything else. All right, so, we are, so a couple of things. So obviously, the first piece is that we have to do a lottery. It has to be public when we do it, can be done electronically. We've reached out, Diana and Chrissy Lamy, our Dean of Admissions, a couple of other folks participated in a virtual meeting with a groom, a groom, a group called Schoolmend. Donnie had kind of directed. They do lotteries for charter schools and other, they're known across the country. We're looking at using them, so basically it would be an online lottery system. When we talked about it, they said, "Well, parents will enter their information into the system." And to be honest, our concern is, what if a parent puts it in wrong and then we do the lottery and the kid doesn't get, the number doesn't show up? So what we're gonna do is, we're still gonna do a regular application and have our people put the data in so we know it's been put in correctly. So we know that if there's an email address that's typed wrong, that it's going right and everything else. But that will give us, will help us feel better. And basically, the day of the lottery, what happens is, it basically, you push the button and every kid has been assigned an ID number, it's not their SACID or anything like that. It makes a list of the ID numbers for, who's first? Ashby, I think alphabetically, Ashby would be first. And then you do the next town. And again, it's all lottery by town, and then you do one lottery for everybody left over because, you know, for, for instance, Harvard, you need to fill the Harvard spots at June 1st and the different other spots. So there's, there's gonna basically be 19 lotteries that we're gonna have to do. But it's not gonna be down the road, it's all gonna be done by computer, so it's gonna be pretty simple. Knock on wood. So that's the public virtual one that we have to do. And again, that's, I already said that, sorry, being redundant.
So I know, I know we have policy committee to give us more detail, but when you said the lottery piece are based on the individual sending schools that kids and students and parents and guys that express that they wanna go to Monty Tech after the tour, da-da-da-da.
Yep, they still get applied, so we'll open up applications in the fall, probably right around November 1st.
So they apply, obviously they're not interested, they don't name them up in the lottery.
Correct, yeah. But, but what we need to have conversation, and again, Diane and I kind of threw, we wanted to make sure that everybody, because obviously, the part that is of most question is, if you remember the selective criteria that we talked about. I shouldn't call it selective, there's criteria. So, you know, the first thing is, is this student awareness requirement. You don't have to do this. You don't have to do this, because everybody gets in. You can say that we wanted to have, to make sure the student has some awareness of what's going on. And by the policy that DESI has passed, what that basically means is, as long as the district offers two open house events and two virtual events, that anybody who participates in those, that could be their kind of stepping stone that allows them to be part of the process. Again, the admin team, Diana, myself, Chrissy, Vicky, Katie, we kind of looked at a lot of this stuff. And then I'll tell you, when I went to the Mava today, I'll be blunt, I think I get the sense that the vast majority of districts aren't even gonna use most of the criteria. That half, because half of it, as we know, is a joke, and the others leaves problems. So for instance, if we do the student awareness piece, kid comes to the open house. How do we know the kid came to the open house? All right, so we thought, well, maybe we can put a QR code and the kid scans something. What if the kid misses the QR code? I mean, we can't guarantee that things are gonna happen that way. So rather than, and again, the whole idea of this process is to be, that we're being more equitable and giving more opportunities to folks, putting something like that. So our recommendation, but this is obviously your guys' conversation, is that we don't include the student awareness requirement. The next three, one is student attendance. If you recall, basically, the measurement for student attendance is as long as they have fewer than 27 unexcused absences, which is again, very, a good number. Yeah, it's for their eighth, half of their eighth grade and all their seventh grade. So for the prior 270 days, as long as they meet that, then this gets their name in a second time. This is not about being in the lottery or not, it just means that your name goes in a second time. All right, the admin team, we came to the decision that we want to recommend that we use this. This would be the only one that the admin team would recommend. There's a big caveat that I'm gonna get to in a second, though. The reason we recommend it is, all vocational schools, and we have been saying all along to the Board of Ed, attendance is so important. It's, you know, a kid needs to come to school to do well at Monty Tech, to do well at a vocational school. But the reality is, I'm sorry.
No, you can finish your sentence.
Oh, I was just gonna say that if we all of a sudden say, "Well, we're not gonna use the student attendance criteria," we're kind of basically poo-pooing something that we've been saying all along that's really important. There is, the caveat is this, and Dr. Turd, he's not here, because I know he probably would have asked it if he was here. What do you do for a homeschooled student? So today at the Mava Retreat meeting, again, all the districts were there, everybody was in one room. When it got to talk about the criteria, I raised my hand and I said, "Does anyone know if you're gonna use attendance, how you're gonna handle homeschool?" Crickets. Nobody has an answer right now. So as much as we would like to have this, we're gonna see if we can come up with something and hopefully we stirred the pot a little bit by me asking that today, that someone else is gonna come up with a good solution. But it's really gonna be hard and we gotta be, again, we're trying to be inclusive of all people applying, so.
Yeah, I know the 27 unexcused absences, obviously, I think is terrible to be in there. However, I don't remember what our policy is directly, let's say we bring a kid in and said, let's say he's right there at 27. So he makes the cut, we bring him in, he's got a terrible attendance record. How are we gonna handle that here once he's in the door?
Diana's gonna call the house and get the kid to come to school and.
Now, what's our, off the top of my head, what's the policy for us on how many unexcused or excused absences?
Eight.
Eight unexcused? Okay, and then what happens?
Per, per A week or B week. And then students typically would lose credit. Then there is an appeal process that happens. So typically, at the end of the year, if a student was beyond, they did the, and they're getting letters throughout the year saying, "You're over the limit, you're over the limit." Often, they come in with the doctor's note. So we only accept those excuses, doctors' notes are the legal notices. Because the parents are always saying, "Well, my kid had a headache, they were home, they were home." Well, if your student is home for more than 16 days in a year, they should be seen, right, they should be under medical care, right? So that's, so that's sort of what happens. So we often get that when we're going on vacation. "Well, I'm really sorry, but vacation, during vacation weeks or the summer." So those would be like unexcused. But there's conversations that happen, make sure that the parents understand the policy, although, if your parent signs off, it's gonna handle.
So we can still hold a Ted respond, but once they're in the door, to a degree?
Correct.
Do you think in any way that we should be looking at revising our policy in any way?
Our attendance?
Our attendance policy, no? Is fine the way it is? Okay, just wanted to make sure somehow we have an handle on that.
And the parents in those schools root for, they pay good attention. Because we do not believe that the location track, kids know, understand.
No, I agree with you.
Kids choosing to be here, they understand their parents' requirements.
Good, all right, I can move there.
Diane?
Yeah, two things. One, in, just in light of this, I think that once we get through and the student comes, if the student is coming here, they gotta start following the rules here. They don't like the rules here, then they have their own options, is to drop out, go back to the sending school, go someplace else, whatever they wanna do. We should not change our rules, and again, we have good, we have good attendance here.
I just wanted to make sure that maybe if we needed to look at that and maybe do any revisions before, you know, I didn't know if that's one of our.
No, we don't wanna do that.
One good thing to say, too, remember that the kids, there are some kids that the parents are forcing maybe to be here, to be in school period, this is the only school they want to come to. But remember, we are not the last resort. So for students that starts at Monty Tech and decides, you know what, I don't wanna do anything with my vocational program, I just really don't like the school anymore, my friends are still, like, they, they will opt to go back then. That's where sometimes, right, we have movement of the student that started off here and says, "You know what, Monty Tech was a great idea, I thought it would, but it's not for me." So they go elsewhere, you know, so that's the thing. And kids, you chose to apply here, you said you wanted to be here in the vocational technical school, you're not coming, why? So we have those conversations. There's a lot of issues, obviously, when you join, those kids have the support and stuff, but those things usually resolve themselves by having those conversations, our student support services, you know, everyone's on top of that. Our goal is to get students here. We call home, no joke, we literally call home, I'm like, "Put your kid on the phone." It was, "Why aren't you here, you need to be here," right? So that's, yeah, so I.
I just wanted to make sure if we're going into this, and it's gonna be a first thing, is should we be looking at any updates?
No.
About policies, we're good the way we are, all right, I'm fine with that.
The state's telling us a lot of stuff.
Just wanted to throw that out.
My, my question was gonna be, they keep talking about 27 unexcused. How many excused is the state thinking it should be? Or are they just saying 27, they're, 27 unexcused? But their thought process may be 45 excused.
They do not, they do not address the excuse department.
Okay.
But by lowering the bar for our attendance, one could think that that's gonna increase the amount of students that are gonna be out of school.
Well, I mean, one thing that I think we all have to try to grasp is, yes, that could be the immediate inclination. I mean, I'm not gonna say the name of the superintendent, but one of the superintendent keeps on saying, "We're gonna be getting criminals." No, it's not, don't go to the extreme. I know you didn't. But even, we shouldn't even make the, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna get some kids who certainly are gonna have attendance issues. But that's, as Diana just said, that's incumbent on us to then address those as they come in. We're gonna be getting kids with a lot deeper special education requirements, disability, deeper IEPs than we have right now. It's just, it's gonna happen. And we're just gonna have to accept it and deal with it and find how we can address that kind of thing.
Go ahead, Kay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the point wasn't about necessarily that, it was more about students who don't come as often or, and then get disconnected from the school. Once they get past sophomore year, that seat's gone. We can't replace that person, right? That seat is too valuable for us as a school to not be able to keep the good students in those seats. That's my biggest concern here, is that we're gonna have, instead of having 350, how many do we have this year, 355 graduating students?
354, yeah.
354, we're gonna have 344 or 334. And that's, that's a bad trend for us, if that happens.
It's obviously something we have to, but we just don't know. We just don't know.
And let's also, sorry. Let's also think about the fact that perhaps there are students that are not, that they're not attending in the district. Maybe their attendance policy is a little, maybe, you know, middle school tends to be sometimes, we wonder like, how does this kid miss so much? Perhaps for those students, Monty Tech is a place for them to be, where they want a little physical training, where they see growth, where they're hooked, like, I wanna be like that carrot for those kids that are saying, "Oh, my God, Mom, Dad, look what I just did this week and I'm excited and I know it ordered for me to stay in auto tech and in order for me to go on co-op because I know this is what I wanna do. I need to perform and I need to show up and I need to do those things." So I always wanna look at it in that way, that maybe perhaps those kids that were not attending school or not again, perhaps this is exactly what that kid needs and that hopefully will change and that our members, and I know what you're saying, you know, the, you know, 11th and 12th grade, we give everything to the students, I mean, we, we can't, we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen two weeks from now.
I definitely agree with you on that because I did meet that one kid at the MVP program.
Yes.
Calvin?
So, so, what, what I, a lot of what I was gonna say was just that.
Sorry.
We just thought was wrong. Because I think we, we're looking at kids that are, what, 13, 14 years old. One of the, one of the members of Betsy keeps talking, I think he was a middle school teacher, he keeps talking about 15, 13, 14, and, you know, how they are isn't necessarily how they're gonna be. And so we're, we seem to be quick to make the assumption that if you were, had absenteeism in a middle school group, you gotta continue that. And that's not to say that what the kid needs is a vocational education. And that'll, that'll pique his interest and keep him going.
You're right.
I'm gonna try to, yeah. So the one last thing I want to say about attendance, though, is also that is the only of the criteria, that's the only one that we can get actual data, all right? Because we can get the attendance record. So that's one of the other reasons why we felt okay with that. But again, we're concerned about the homeschool situation. Student discipline, I'll come right out and say it, we all know it's a joke. The only thing that would disqualify someone is if they committed a felony that they either were found guilty and that felony can only be an assault in a school, and they have to either, you know, admitted guilt or been found guilty. That's gonna be two kids in the entire state potentially. It's just, they, they made it so difficult that there's just, it's a waste of time. So we do not recommend the student discipline one. Student interest one, yes, we wanna have student interest. But again, it's a situation where it's been so watered down. So, you know, they say you can do a non-evaluative interview. When we met with Chrissy, Chrissy, you know, Dean of Admissions, she said, "Well, I think I might kind of still wanna do an interview because then at least I can tell whether or not they really wanna come here." But then we immediately said, "But you can't do that. That's not gonna serve any purpose because that's not the purpose of the, that's making a judgment on the kid and you're not supposed to be in." She was like, "Oh, you're right." The other thing is that we found out today at Mava is you can't pick, like, let's say we said we only wanna do the interview for student interest. You can't do that because what DESI said at their Vocational Council, when it was brought up by some superintendents, is that, but that could also be seen as prejudice because there may be a student who has, who gets anxious about doing an interview. So if that's the only way they can demonstrate interest, they can't do it, so that's unfair to that kid. So we do not recommend that we do the student interest piece as well. So basically, I mean, part of it is, and I guess Diane, I would say to you, because it's gonna be, you know, going to Diane, we're gonna present something, if we don't find something, if we can't figure something out about homeschool, we might not even recommend student attendance. But right now, we're not planning on recommending anything except potentially attendance. And I guess, I don't wanna say it's a speak now forever, hold your peace, but I guess we also thought at least anyone who's not on the Policy Subcommittee, if you wanted to share something so Diane knows it, I guess now's the time. And I'm gonna shut up for a little while.
Or send me an email.
Yeah, or send her an email.
Go ahead, Calvin.
Yeah, I read this. I have a little concern about there being a weighted lottery as opposed to just a straight-up lottery. Because just the way society is and every, oh, there's gonna be some fix because, you know, oh, well, Johnny's kid's got in because he must have had extra picks or there must have been some fix or this or that. To have just a straight, single lottery, if this is what's recommended, I have a problem. I'll go along with it because this is being recommended by the administration, I'm a junior policy committee, that's what they wanna do. What I would ask, though, is after the first year, to look at student attendance and see how many, how many applicants did not get a second pick. Because if we're only talking about one or two applicants not getting a second pick out of all the people applying, is it worth working through that criteria and explaining to parents why their Johnny didn't get a second pick whereas little Tom's kid did, because, you know.
I'd skip.
Just, I'm sure that everybody has opinions on this. And I think the proper venue for that is to let Diane know and when it comes before the Policy Committee, maybe give them some input. I think if we just talk all about it tonight, a lot of that's gonna be lost. Bill?
If interest is not gonna be considered, do we bother with open houses?
Yeah, because, so I was, at first, I held back a little bit because I was concerned that some, there's gonna be a whole lot of students that are gonna apply saying, "Oh, it's a vocational school." But they don't necessarily know about A week, B week. You know, they don't know how we actually do it. It's not the processes, and they learn that when they come to, come to those events.
But they don't have to come to apply.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. I was reluctant at first, but then the point was made to me that we don't necessarily, I think we can still, first off, most kids are gonna come for tour day, so they're gonna be able to come and see some of it. I think a lot of them will still come to the open houses and everything because they're gonna wanna see what's coming up. And also, I think what we're gonna be putting out a lot of stuff, we, Diane was part of the group, he said, "Listen, we have to make sure that we're putting out there that we highly encourage you to become so you can learn X." You know, that what the schedule is, but you can learn not just about the offerings and everything else. So we're still gonna be pushing people to come to those. We're just not thinking of making it a requirement because, again, tracking who actually participated and who went to what, it'll be a very difficult thing. So, so just very quickly, so that's what, we talked about the criteria, we'll take care of that. You can see what the timeline that we kind of foresee, the Policy Subcommittee on the 20th, go for a second reading and then we have to submit for November 1st. Just so everybody knows what has to be in the policy, you know, these are some of the basic things. But we do have to create an application form, you know, that talks about it. We have to say specifically how we're going to be recruiting people because, again, that's, because they're still gonna be checking, don't ask me why, because in theory, a lottery is a random process, but the state still will be tracking who got in, does it represent the community and everything else? We have to say, you know, how kids are gonna be getting into shop and everything else in terms of explore. It was talked today at Mava that there is nothing in this policy that talks about exploratory being a lottery, so that's not happened yet, which is really good, because that would be, that'd be challenging. So, it kind of, that's the rest of the, you know, I kind of did a lot of this. So, so that's where we are in admissions, hopefully we can get going on that. Oh, I should say, Mava is gonna start tracking what every district is doing. We're just gonna, they just haven't said with the timeline, like, when they're gonna start tracking and everything else. But we'll have information about who's viewing what criteria and everything else. Quickly on, a shorter version on different policies, so the competency determination, again, is basically the new graduation requirement. The state, shocker, ball shocks, dragging their feet a little bit, so they had their commissions that traveled around the state. Did I do that? Let's go there. So they're trying to come up with a model policy. We have to submit by October thirty-first what our competency determination policy is gonna be. They're going to announce in November what the state expectation is. So literally, we may announce our policy and it'll be completely wiped out by the state in November. I'm letting you know that in advance. One of the good things is about, still technically, the kids who took MCAS already, which are next-year seniors would have already taken MCAS, if they passed MCAS, they've already met the requirement. The vast majority of our incoming seniors have passed MCAS. So we only have a handful of students that we have to worry about for this coming senior class. This distinction that I will make sure everybody understands is they have to complete, satisfactory, complete coursework. That's us saying that we, we, we want kids to take two English classes, we want them to take algebra and geometry, boom, boom, boom. But they also have to show mastery, and that's where the state's having trouble defining. What they're basically saying is the kid has to pass a final exam, do a final project, do a capstone project. Something that shows that they didn't just pass the class with a D minus, but something that they can do that shows that they really understood what they learned. That's the vague part of it. Christie couldn't be here tonight, she had to take care of something outside, but we're gonna be working on that. Again, the plan is to get it to that August twentieth meeting. But we, we should be pretty good for, like I said, for this year's seniors and everything else. And then we'll see what happens if everybody puts together their policy and the state wipes it out. Hopefully not.
Would it be possible, because I know we did the last, we did one policy with changes last year to cover a few students.
Yep.
So if we thought that the majority are, are past MCAS and things like that, maybe just update that particular one to make it something quick?
In a way, but that didn't.
Is it because of the mastery issue?
That's exactly right. Because of the mastery, the other stuff that wasn't part of the first one, we have to do it to a deeper policy. Real quickly, and again, you can check it out, but we always finish up the August meeting with just kind of showing what the post-grad plans for the class of twenty twenty-five were. If you're looking at one of the shops that's in blue, that's the shop where typically you would expect more kids going on to college. The green is kind of the middle group, the where it's kind of, could be workforce or college. And then it's really that orange color there on the second to last page that really talks about ones that you would want to see more kids going into the workforce. You can take a look at all that, I'm not necessarily gonna go through it, you'll see some of the construction trades fantastic, some struggling a little bit. I mean, cabinet making for the last couple of years has been having more kids kind of moving on to college. I think you know that cabinet making by the state has been labeled as one of the programs that's in decline. So they have concern about cabinet making, we're still hanging in there for it. But the one thing that was interesting is when we did the numbers, you know, we shared this with you last year, the ten-year history. We did the numbers and I literally went to Julie, so I'm like, Julie, did we screw up, did we look at their log? It's the exact same numbers that we got last year in terms of percentages. And as, you know, as you can see, it kind of follows the trend of what we've had, you know, over the, you know, again, twenty-two, twenty-three, obviously a little bit higher. But in general, it's, it's been kind of at a pretty even spread there and everything else in terms of being in the military. The other, and decided, literally, there's a category that's other, and you have a handful of kids each year who pick the other category, so. So sorry, I knew that was gonna be a bit of a long one, but. Sorry, John. It's Tammy's fault. Skate coat, Tammy, skate coat.
Diana?
All right. Mike told me I have five minutes. So summer camp, we had another, two successful weeks of summer camp, and I, I can't say this now, but as you know, Chrissy Lamy runs our summer programs, and that's when we get kids, you know, fifth, sixth, and seventh graders, and that's mostly for parents that are looking for activities for the kids to do. This year, we were lucky enough, and in your presentation, there's a link, there's a campa link that Chrissy Lamy put together that is exceptional. There was no way I was gonna copy and paste the information, you have it on there. But we had a total of two hundred and thirty participants with a total of sixteen different programs. Kathy Hansett also assisted Chrissy Lamy during those two weeks. We offered a total of, so sixteen communities, I'm sorry, kids from sixteen different communities, and it was a total of nine different camps. This year, new, we added a drama camp too that was quite exciting for the kids. As you know, we have kids that are all looking to do different activities. And certainly, some of those are getting familiar with Monty Tech, but certainly finding activities for kids to do, even those kids that may not be interested in Monty Tech either. So that's also great for our communities and certainly working families. Summer school, we just completed summer school, we had a total of twenty-seven students, which is a beautiful thing. The less kids we need in summer school, it means the more successful they work during the school year, which is exactly what we want. I have listed here the teachers that assisted, Katie Schmidt, our sister principal, ran summer school. We also, which was a little bit different this year, in the past, we've had the same school counselor come and sort of cover all of summer school. This year, they asked if they could rotate, so we had different counselors in at different times, which was kind of neat because they all were able to see their own students that were here. But again, every single student class, of course, is over here, so that was fantastic. AP boost camp, this is something that Kirsten Drew-Crawatt did. We had a total of thirteen students, we had nine incoming, I get the nine in the four, so there was nine incoming juniors, four incoming seniors. And really, it's working on different AP strategies and really prepping the students, do summer for summer work with them as they prepare to take on AP courses come the fall. So again, that's another successful program that they've been doing for a couple of years now that's proven to be very successful. And then the next list is just our upcoming events. In a couple of weeks, as you know, we're wrapping things up, things are very busy in the office, trying to get ready for back-to-school, bus driver meetings, meet-the-coaches nights, new teacher orientation, we do an induction program on the twentieth and twenty-first. We also welcome our new freshmen, we have a new student and parent night in the evening as well as parents want to know, you know, the bus schedule and just questions as, you know, it's different when they're learning about the school as their students are applying and have been accepted, and now it's like, okay, it's here, what do I do? And having the freshman here before school starts, when the building is empty, it's just a beautiful thing, they get to go through with their schedule, they get to open their locker, they get to do some activities with our instructors too, just to, and make some friends or at least see some familiar faces before the first day of school, when we have fourteen hundred and thirty kids entering our building. So, and again, upcoming calendar, so you know, first day, we're working on PD for the first day for our teachers as we welcome our students back.
What time is the bus private orientation, is it ten?
I'll, I have it on my calendar.
All right, I just curious. And the other thing I was gonna ask is on the summer camp.
Yes.
You said sixteen communities, do you have a breakdown of like what town?
It's in the campa. Yes, it's in that presentation, it has specific, like, which towns. And that's open to everybody and anybody, as you know, so it doesn't have to be from our center districts. And that's, you know.
Thank you.
So, we had a babysitter course this year too, which was really neat because a lot of kids have to stay get a certification with that, so that's really neat, so. Okay, and then next, we're just going to the enrollment report. And a quick thing that I just want to point out with, with the enrollment is just, as you see the quotas of each one of our cities and towns, I know this is something that comes up, remember that when we look at our incoming class, a town like Harvard where they didn't fill out of their seat, so they had fourteen seats, for example, we only have four students from Harvard coming, so those ten seats were then distributed to that combined list of kids being on that list, right? So you'll notice that some of the numbers that they're slightly off, that is why. We also have had a couple of students that have moved from one town into another town, so you'll notice that there's a slight change in those as well. And that is it for me.
How do you see the waitlist numbers on there anywhere else?
This is just the enrollment list, we don't have the waitlist on here.
Usually we see it.
Well, usually because August is still, there's so much changes happening, I think we started in September.
Yeah.
But it really doesn't become fairly decent data until October.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
So you have to, there's a caveat in September being if.
Yeah, and counselors haven't even come back yet, so when the counselors come back, that's when it really, the coming and going really ramps up at that point.
Yeah, good, all right, thank you.
Personnel?
Sure. So, somebody you may know as TC, one of our custodians, great, great guy, has chosen to retire. In fact, we did a little gathering for him today, with a cake and everything else, and we really appreciate that, but we missed, but a good man. Thank you. I mentioned there, Andrea Carrato, who was the practical nursing director, she's chosen to resign, but she's speaking with us as an adult. And then both Kaylee Chichar and Carrie Shepherd got teaching positions. So they went from Kaylee, like, from being a specialist, a vocational specialist, to a teacher. And Carrie, God bless her, was driving up here from Rhode Island. She got a job much closer to her home, so if you, God bless her, she gets to chop her commute in half basically. And then you'll see there's a log list there, we're doing hiring throughout the summer, it's still continuing, still have some positions to fill. And some of those are folks that are switching from one position to another. Looking to be, because that Paul was our VP there, he has switched to being a vocational specialist, instructor assistant. So now we'll be filling this position as well, so. That's kind of personal.
Let's go, subcommittees, when you get there, Diane.
All right. Move that the district committee approve for second reading policies CBJ, Superintendent Director's Termination of Employment revised, CBJ dash R, Superintendent Director's Termination of Employment, new policy, CBH, Superintendent's Consulting Activities revised, CBI, Evaluation of the Superintendent Director revised, and deletion of policy CBK, Suspension of Superintendent Directors, it's included in policy CBJ dash R. Again, this is a second reading, I didn't hear any comments or anything else after the first reading was approved, so hopefully it just slide gone through.
All right. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? If not, call a vote, Julie.
Thank you. All right, second policy, move that the district committee approve for second reading policies JJH, Student Travel, and JJH dash R, Student Travel Regulations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Being done? Call a vote? Motion passed?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Capital improvements, Scott, anything?
No, never mind.
Are you any meeting plans, anything coming up?
Diane just handed some information over to me, I'll be working on that.
Okay. All right. Eric is, Eric is off the voice-out case this week. He'll be back tomorrow night for workforce.
Yeah, I'll let everybody just know that tomorrow we have kind of our, we, we had our first meeting with the Paris and the Cal workers, but tomorrow's kind of the first real conversations about, we, we, we've kind of exchanged versions, so that's the first part.
All right. Student advisory, Mr. Barber?
Definitely not met.
Yeah? What are you anticipating?
When they come back.
When the students are in the building.
Yeah.
We'll schedule a meeting.
Okay. That probably, that's probably a good idea.
It's helpful.
You're not gonna drive around to each other's houses, no?
We could. We offered food, they'd probably show up.
Okay, Dr. Kariki's not here. Financial planning, Calvin?
We have not met, I understand we may be meeting later this month or earlier in September. My life seems to be. This, this, this year being what, twenty-six? Twenty-seven? Twenty-six?
Need to find a, find twenty-six.
Like she says.
You gotta keep your eye on her. Okay. So acceptance of grant?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that this committee accept the Career Technical Initiative Round Ten Grant for workforce training to prepare unemployed and underemployed Massachusetts residents for jobs in the following target occupations, CNC operator, groundskeeping, equipment operator, and small engine repair, HVAC, and cook in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Do we have a second?
Have a second.
Any, any questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ken.
Question. So, is this an evening program?
Yes.
Basically?
Yeah. Yeah, it's part of, it's part of what you get.
All right, anything else? If not, you wanna call a vote?
Motion.
You said the name of the chairman?
Motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that the district committee votes to accept the donation from Amy Reed Dennison of gloves with an approximate value of a hundred and eight dollars for the masonry shop.
Second.
Okay, move to seconded? Discussion? Hearing done, call a vote, please.
Motion, new candidates.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that the district committee votes to accept the donation from the Department of Corrections of PPE with an approximate value of eight hundred dollars for all shops.
Second.
Move to seconded, for the sake of discussion, could somebody tell us what PPE?
Personal protective equipment.
Sir?
Personal protective equipment.
Number code in, everybody has.
Okay. Anything else? If not, call a vote, please.
Motion, new candidates.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that the district committee votes to accept the donation from Airgas USA Inc. of a Miller Multimatic two fifteen welding machine with tape kit and a hundred pounds of thirty welding.
Thirty thousand.
Wire. With a value of five thousand dollars for the welding and metal fabrication job.
Have a second, man.
Motion's been moved to seconded, any discussions? Hearing done, call a vote, please.
Motion, new candidates.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that the district committee votes to accept the donation from Norman Buck of chef boats with a value of two hundred dollars for the culinary shop.
Have a second.
Okay, motions been made, seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing done, call a vote? Okay. Any teacher information on proposals? Hearing done. Chairman report. Some things I wanted to make you aware of with their pending legislation for banning the use of cell phone and electronics during school day.
It looks like it's gonna happen too.
And it looks like it's gonna happen too, I'm sure.
Recently, it recently passed the Senate by a vote of thirty-eight to two. I'm not sure what's going on with the House, but I know the governor is in support of it, so something's gonna be coming down here. But what I've been seeing is that part of the legislation is that Desi is supposed to give us a model policy. And there is also a, a lot of the issues, we're gonna deal with local policies, so that's another thing on your plate.
Yeah, Tom and I have talked over the summer about this, should we get started or just wait?
Yeah.
Yeah, and do you mind, even if that's, they're not, because the bill, or the law doesn't wanna affect it till next, so we have plenty of time.
Tom, do you know if that's gonna affect athletics? Or do you have any idea, like, you know, after school athletics, you know, they're gonna be allowed to have their phones to the field and stuff like that?
Up to the field.
You did, I don't know if you knew any of that, no idea.
Well, that's, that's, that's the whole part of our policy thinking, that's the activity, you know, who's the candidate?
Uh, yeah, I understand, if they do pass this, you're right, it's not in the next school year.
Yeah.
But I know that some of the districts now, among their own districts, the school committee makes a policy that they, you know, I know like a bunch of them, they experimented with their eighth graders last year, they went really well. It's now instituted this year, there's no phones, they can all go to the yard with bags. And uh, it just, you know, earbuds, watches, everything, it makes a big, big difference, huge.
So, and, and I agree, but one thing I wanna make sure, is that one of the concerns uh, with the bill for us, Tammy in particular, is those, so I, I went to a presentation on the bags, it's the way to go, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna want to do those, the zip bags and everything else. It basically costs thirty bucks a pop. So there's a big concern about if you're gonna do it right, and do it with the bags, is this gonna be an unfunded mandate from the state? Is the state gonna say, we're gonna chip in some cash to help all the districts?
I assume it would be, because it'd say grant.
For sure. To God's ears, I don't know. Yeah, but, but I agree, that's, that's the way to do it, that's the way to do it.
And the, the other pending legislation is regarding school time, school start time. But this has been, I mean, this has been talked about for like thirty years.
At least.
Forever. But it's, it's in the legislative process now, I don't know what's gonna happen. It's something you should keep up on. And just, my personal, my personal opinion, in, in terms of the admissions policy, I think we all agree that there's gonna be a lottery sometime. And the two things that I'm concerned about and I wanna see happen is that district agreements are on it. And that we give us some proposals to just have a straight lottery for all fourteen, fifty seats or whatever it is. And the other thing is the overall control of the lottery, and I think that we're more than capable of instituting our own policy and making a successful lottery rather than having it shut down first. Let's, uh, school committee comments, anybody wanna chime in on anything, Diane?
Oh, you know. Okay, insofar as the admissions et cetera per district so far, all I've ever heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, but all I've ever heard from Desi is the, if any school, regional school system has a um, district agreement of some sort, that they have, the admissions policy also has to follow that district agreement where it has um, so many, the allocations per community or per sending, per community. Um, and also because that's, we use that for calculation of um, capital. So I think we'd be all right, but like Tom says, we have to run nineteen. I just wasn't sure whether Monty Tech was gonna run it or the sending schools or towns.
So do we, we run two?
Yeah, cause I'm like, oh, what a, what a disaster to be honest, cause you could have it everywhere. Okay.
No, the other, the, the district agreement is a binding legal contract.
Right, so they, they, they can't override it, right.
Well, legislature could, Desi can't.
Yeah. Yeah, and the cell phone will be doing it at that. Okay, my favorite subject, skills. Just a quick update, because I didn't realize the numbers had gone up this high. Skills is definitely a student-run organization. I mean, the actual people that work for Skills is probably less than a couple of dozen. And the students actually are um, doing all of the presentations, the opening, the closing ceremonies, et cetera. And it's also why you have a lot of delegates and, and good for um, Ms. Ikonen to get uh, secretary for the state, that's wonderful. But right now Skills has the largest membership um, of over four hundred and forty-five, close to four hundred and fifty thousand kids that are part of Skills as a, as a member. That also includes some professional, like I joined myself as a professional. This year there was over a hundred and fourteen contests, um, just under seven thousand competitors, which is the largest ever. We actually had it cooler in Atlanta by about five degrees than you all had up here. So that was fun, writing back to people saying, oh, we're pretty cool down here, it's only ninety-two. And Mike Rowe was a guest speaker, I, I did not get an opportunity to see him, uh, we gave up our seats for other kids. But he was there and I guess he gave a phenomenal speech. And I understand that it might be even on YouTube someplace, that's what somebody told me, and you might be able to see it. But he's out there and he's really going after um, the fact that we need more vocational schools, we need more vocational uh, trained students. That there's now upwards of over four point eight million opening, job openings in the skills trades. And he spent quite a bit of time there, which he typically does. And please, if you have any thoughts when you get through reading, you know, the information that's covered here for the admissions policies, or if you have any questions or anything else, just send me emails. That we, we've gotta be careful when we have subcommittee meetings, that we don't have too many people there because then that can constitute uh, a meeting that could be in violation of open meeting without having all the towns and everything notified somehow. I haven't quite figured out how that works, but anyway, that's just something to keep in mind, but I certainly would love to have any comments if anybody is thinking about it when they go along. That's it, thank you. Happy coming back.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Barber? Mr. Raymond?
I spoke next to him.
I second that.
I'll keep, I'll keep Diane busy at our subcommittee meeting when we get into the whole policy thing. I, I don't think it's gonna be as bad, I think we'll get through it and I think Tom and, and staff seems to have a good grip on how we're going to try to manage this the best we can, I think we'll be okay. You know, I'm not a very big fan of this, and I know I'm not the only one. But at the same time, I, I'm, I'm always gonna fight for the best interests of our communities as a whole and the schools whole, so um, you know, but I'm not, I'm flexible either, so, and I agree with uh, Diane, who's gonna have a busy meeting and hopefully it'll go smooth and we'll get it figured out right.
Oh, it will, I'll bring my whip.
Oh, I love it that you get that way.
Scott, Gavin?
No, I'm good.
Calvin?
All set, thank you.
Calvin?
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
I go.
Oh, well, because Tammy, uh, the books are all closed, they're busy this year, well, everything is good?
Close, closed, yeah, but they're like this, tomorrow. Yeah, this is that time of year where the final warrant is mid-July and we're cleaning up, getting the new fiscal year open, so it's just right in the middle of the week. Busy.
All right. Nothing else, we have a motion going through?
Hello? Second.
All favor, the eyes have it, thank you.